According to.
Sorry.
That's okay. According to my phone, actually it's 6:29. Well, wait a minute.
Is Dinesh jumping on tonight?
As far as I know, he is.
I'll start to get frantic texts.
Actually, I just realized he's not here, right? So.
Oh, there he is.
Okay.
I thought you needed my assistance, Dinesh, since I'm your new secretary.
Yeah, where were you?
I'm very sorry. I'm slacking in my new role.
He wasn't there to help you out.
Sherry, you notice there's no coffee in my hands right now? What's going on?
Oh, this is being recorded.
I was gonna say it's being recorded and there's attendees here, so be nice, Dinesh.
I didn't say a bourbon.
Well, it is 6:30 and Dinesh has joined us, so we are ready to call the meeting for Thursday, August 27th, for the Norton School Committee to Order. So, welcome, everybody. So first on our agenda is the second reading and vote on the policy ACAB harassment. So I will turn that over to you, Dr. Bianna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back from the great state of Vermont. I'm dropping off your daughter at school. So there are no changes from the first reading, and as you know, it's a boilerplate changes coming through. The changes from USDOE and OCR. So we are recommending that we put this into our new policy handbook, which is, as you know, is new and updated. And this will further update that policy with the language as recommended.
Great. So, and this requires a vote, is that correct?
That is correct. Motion and a vote.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we could, we can vote. So is there a motion to approve the policy ACAB for harassment?
Motion to approve is written.
Thanks. Is there a second? All in favor? So, let's see. Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Kathleen?
Yes.
And Carolyn is yes.
That motion was, thank you to all. That motion for the record was Dinesh Savas, seconded by Sherry Cohen, 5-0 vote.
Great. We'll move to the second item, second reading and vote on policy EBCFA face coverings. Dr. Bianna?
Yeah, so we're moving on this, as we know from the last time, to eliminate the word face coverings and to move directly to face masks. I was recommending that last time. And we've made those changes throughout. And part of this is just to make sure that we're not getting into debates about people making up their own face masks or face coverings that, you know, next thing you know, we got, the other day I was in the store, somebody's wearing a handkerchief and all of that. These are, students are gonna be in the building and staff for a seven-hour day. We're recommending people bring their own masks, but we also have masks available in every classroom and in the buildings.
So, thank you. Is there any questions or comments on this new policy? Seeing none, we can vote. So is there a motion to approve the policy EBCFA face coverings as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor? Kathleen?
Yes.
Carolyn is yes. Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And just from the school committee, Madam Chair, just through you for the rest of the committee, we will email both of these policies to parents, but we'll also include pictures of the face mask so that people are very clear to understand what is meant by the word face mask.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move discussion and vote on reduction of transportation fees. Dr. Bianna, is that you?
Yeah, I'm gonna, is Matt still on? Because I know Matt's going to another meeting. So, Matt, if you want to speak to this, it's based on the discussions we had the other night and we're recommending.
Yeah, so the data we provided the other night was, our students are gonna be riding the bus about 68% of the time that they would have under a normal process. So we want to reduce that fee down to about $133 for each student. We think that is in line with, I'm sorry, it's a 68% reduction in the time. And that's in line with what we, what would be proportionately based upon a daily rate of what they're actually gonna be using. So we're hoping that you'll vote to approve the fees for $133 for the bus fee for this year.
Great. So I know we had discussed this a little bit the other night. Is there any additional comments or questions? And I think I'm very sorry, am I, I'm supposed to be asking for comments and questions also from attendees, is that correct?
Carolyn, before we go there, Carolyn, I do, I do want to just get some clarity.
Do I?
So are we, we're, we're fine with that number as a full-year number? If change, if there's a change, it is what it is, right?
Yeah, we, the only reason we would change it from this number is if we went to remote and then we're not transporting, then we would reduce even further. But I wouldn't come back, I don't think we would come back and ask for you to increase that number. That doesn't seem right.
Okay, thank you.
So even if we, like, let's just say things kind of go back to normal, whatever, and we end up going to school more days and the buses are being used more, it is what it is, the $133 is the bus fee per rider? And we have the money to cover the actual bus bill?
Yes. So, yeah, we did, yeah, yeah.
Our transportation recommendation, our recommendation going forward with the article at town meeting has funding for transportation, number one. And then, number two, if, let's say, in fact, we needed, let's say, we needed more buses. I don't know how that would happen, then that would really be the only time we would go back. So we've tried to, as you know, we collect, I don't know what the number matter is anymore, but 150, 175, somewhere.
175, yeah.
Right, so we're not making as much of a difference by collecting this amount. But we also have some concerns, you'll see in the next vote after this one, about parking as well, so.
So what is the actual, what is our actual bus fee? Because I know we always collect the 175, but our bus bill is always over a million dollars. So what is our bus bill gonna be this year?
Well, it's gonna vary depending upon what we actually use for services. So it depends on athletics and trips and stuff like that. We do anticipate our cleaning fee coming through, and we're seeing that with both of our bus companies, VanPul and with Bloom. And then we are, we're working the numbers to see what the capacities are in each of the buses. But we may have to reinstate the fourth tier for this year, just to have safe capacities on the buses. And that's an additional $50,000 for that. So our fee was gonna be slightly over, about a million one, a little over a million one for this year, if we do all of our transportation. However, some of the transportation is just not gonna happen. So it won't quite hit that number.
Thanks, Matt. Go ahead.
Just as an example, X number of dollars, games, 18-game season, a minimum of those nine are away. That's transporting. Some of that's not gonna happen at all. So that will be able to, quote, take our budget, operational budget, and just literally move it into the fee line items to offset, as one example. Field trips, those types of things that come from, a lot of them actually pay through our wonderful parent groups, but those that aren't, that we pick up the prices and all of that. Offsetting of students' costs, as you know, with the reduction in athletics, which you'll be hearing about tonight as a last-minute addition to the agenda because of information that's literally just came in. So we feel pretty comfortable with it, but we also informed the town in our meeting this week that, with Mike and James, that, you know, this is, this is kind of like a number that we're projecting at the best that we can.
So this won't negatively affect, like, our budget for next year if we're not, if we're going over or if we're going under? I mean, usually we base it on the next year.
Yeah, so when you vote your budget, you're voting your budget, and we work into our budget, things like fees, in order to balance it. And then, so we might, we might say it's 175 in fees for transportation, and we collect 174, or 179, or 180, or 165. It all depends. And then we always have to offset it within the operational budget if there's a shortage. We typically use our fees first as a way to show that the collected money is being used for what it's supposed to be used for, so that people don't think we're using the money to, which, by the way, we can't.
I know this has been really difficult, because as everything, it's just a fluid situation. So Matt, thank you for really kind of working on this and giving us what potentially could be, you know, just at least somewhat of a realistic sort of option moving forward. So is there any additional questions or comments? And I will ask our attendees, are there any questions or comments from anyone who's attending the meeting? I'm not seeing any. Jen, are you?
No, there are no questions at this time.
Great. So we can take a vote on the reduction of transportation fees? Is there a motion to approve the reduction of transportation fees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great, thanks. Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Carolyn, I mean, yes. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
COVID-19-related updates. Dr. Bianna?
Before that, can we do the parking fee?
Oh, my gosh, sorry, I missed that one. Yes.
That's fine.
Discussion and vote on reduction of parking fees. Thank you for noticing that.
Yeah, I'll turn that over to Matt as well.
Yeah, so in line with this, the parking fee is $25 per student per year. We want to reduce that to zero for this upcoming year. That will help us, by having a reduced fee, students can drive to school, which is another way to keep them safe. It lowers the capacities on the buses and helps us out to make sure that we can keep the buses safer by having students that are driving into school.
But they'll still have to have assigned spaces, right? Because otherwise, it would be a free-for-all.
All rules and regulations that are applied that are not connected to the fee is still in place. So registration, if you get in trouble in school, you can still lose your parking, your driving rights and all that stuff. Nothing changes.
Thanks. Matt, when you collect money for parking, can you just sort of refresh our memory? That money goes into a separate item, correct? So will this have any sort of specific impact to our current budget?
So, yeah, anytime you don't collect fees, it obviously does have an impact. But what we collect each year is right around $6,000 for parking fees. So it's not a comparable $30 million budget, it's not a large amount. We usually do a lot of our ice melt purchasing. Some of our snow removal costs, we'll charge that. And if there's money left over, we'll push through upkeep on the parking lot, parking lot lights, anything, those kind of upgrades. So we would definitely, we would hold off on any kind of parking lot upgrades, so that reduces some of the costs of its budget. We're still gonna have to purchase ice melt and do snow removal when it happens. However, you know, if we're looking at three to $4,000 for that cost, we're just gonna have to figure out how to absorb that in our budgets for now.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Just as a, as a sense of the history of this, pre-Matt, traditionally, the parking fees have actually been a difficult thing for us to find a way to spend, to be honest with you, because we are pretty restricted on it. And the, I don't even know what the fees are right now, but they were 100 or something, something like that.
They were 150.
Yeah.
It dropped down to 25.
Right, not that long ago, and we just couldn't spend the money, so we decided to take them down. So, I mean, quite frankly, from 25 to zero, I don't think it's gonna be a huge impact either way, quite frankly.
Yeah, and Dinesh, to your comment, I think what's really important, so that the public understands it, the way the funds can be used is so specific to the actual lot itself. Like, we can't use the money for the walkways, we can't use the money for a tree that's hanging over the parking lot. It's literally the lot itself.
Good to know. So, thanks, thanks for that update. And is there any additional questions, comments on the reduction of parking fees? Any from our attendees? Nope. Seeing none, we can take a vote. So is there a motion to approve the vote on the reduction of parking fees to zero for this upcoming school year?
So moved.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. So Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn is yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
COVID-19-related updates. Dr. Bianna?
Thank you so much. I guess it'd take a world pandemic for the, for us to actually decline some of our fees. I don't say that joke only, but you know, we've spent so much time trying to do that. So it is a user fee, so I think it's the right thing for, to do what you folks have recommended, based upon how much time the kids are actually gonna be taking the bus or the parking lot, using their cars. Latest update is really working to address cohorts that went home. We're now getting the second wave of requests, I guess the first wave, with some people didn't need to do it or they're now maybe finding out and wanting a different cohort. So we're gonna have to really look at that because of the balancing of the classrooms and the needs and the service delivery, because that's a huge impact. The, the student schedules are being worked on. They will not be released at this time, but they will release before school gets out. We're due to start on Monday with staff, and we're hoping to have some opportunity for teachers to be able to actually remote in and get to put a name with a face type of thing, especially our youngest children, is important. I did put out for remote learning teachers today. This is being paid for, at least through the December, with our grant money. We've also informed the town in our meeting we had this week, and by the town, I mean Mike, Eunice, and James, while we're the, kind of counting about our recommendations. And we'll be coming back with some changes with that after talking to them, based on the articles that we filed. And we also have some folks that will be pulling off of their request for leave and actually making them remote teachers as part of the hybrid model during remote, own-parent choice. And then the third part that goes with that is in trying to find the right staff in K through eight. We're gonna be in decent shape, really concerned about the remote only at the high school, because it's so content-specific. And I, I myself reviewed the cases today with the schedule in my new role as the virtual high school principal. And trying to make sure that kids have, or get what they want's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting. So parents and students need to bear with us, based on that choice. We'll prioritize seniors, because I think, based on their transcript creation, then juniors, and then sophomores, and then freshmen. Only because it's so important in the senior year to finalize their transcripts. So I want to make sure that they're in a, they're in as good of a place as we can in terms of the online, the remote parent choice process. We have some other administrators that will be helping us out in terms of K to five and then six to eight. And I'll announce those when, when we're ready to do so. We're just not ready right now. And I think the last part is, you know, working off of opening day this coming Monday, the opportunity for us to really think about our theme for the year, which I'm pushing and will be announcing to the staff, and I can say it tonight, they've already heard it once from me in a communication, looking at a theme that really looks at the idea of kindness, flexibility, and forgiveness. Because this is gonna be a stressful year, just because there's too many unknowns. Every year, somebody has to deal with an unknown in their life, in their professional, personal life. We're gonna be dealing with 2,400 students and 400 staff and administrators that really, we don't know what tomorrow will bring every day in terms of this pandemic. Yet, I think it's an opportunity for us to be and try to attempt to be flexible. Not all, not all people are flexible, nor do they like to be flexible. They like to stick to the way things are done. And those are gonna be, unfortunately, discussions, or fortunately, discussions we have to have with people around flexibility and the needs of students and families and our own staff. So going forward, I'm hoping that the COVID-19-related updates section is something that I really don't have to have on the agenda, unless there's an incident. I wanna kind of get away from talking about COVID, and I want to talk more about, and of course, recognizing that's a priority under health and safety, but trying to really push what's the teaching and learning that's going on in our schools? What activities are we allowing for in terms of athletics and/or clubs and activities and that type of stuff? More than all the other stuff that we've been talking about for months now. And that starts really with my message to the teachers, which will be very clearly noted about, let's not spend too much time trying to pass out a syllabus or a textbook during the first few days of school. I think we need, I think we need a better approach than that. I think we need to really get to know our students and their learning styles, and our students get to know their teachers. Because if we do close down, it could be a long closure, a lot longer than it was in the past. So these, these six weeks coming up that you voted are really important. And hopefully, we can keep our buildings open and safe during that entire time and continue even longer, I hope. But if we have to close at some point, then hopefully, the relationships have started to be, to be developed more so in person than just behind a screen.
Thank you. I think we probably all can agree that there really isn't much, kind of, that we can plan on, right? We just have to, I think your word flexibility is something that we're probably all using in our own lives every single day. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you for really supporting Norton Public Schools during all of this. So is there any comments or questions about moving forward, anyone? Anybody in attendance? So I am looking forward to, I can't believe the summer is almost ending and we're back to school on Monday. So although students don't come back to school until September, our teachers and staff will be back on Monday, really gearing up to navigate what is a little bit of an unknown year. So we'll do it together. Thanks for that update. Other business, Dr. Bianna?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you and the rest of the committee and the public, I've asked Aaron Sumner, who's our director of athletics, as well as student services at the high school in his new dual role for this year, to give us an update on athletics. I'm not looking for a vote, the school committee, looking for just sharing information, because the social media's gonna start to get really ramped up. And I think it's important for all of us to just tell you what we know, tell you what we don't know, which there might be still a lot of those in my discussions with Aaron over the last few days. But at least we have a direction that we're going in. Aaron?
All right, thank you. Assuming most of you have the presentation that I have. So just before we even get going, I just want to let you guys know that the athletic directors and the principals, we did a lot of work just going through the guidelines. I mean, it was, we were going through the guidelines all the time, going back and forth with each other. And just the amount of time to get through the DESI guidelines, the EEA guidelines, the MIAA guidelines, and then you get their recommendations. So it was a long process. So as I go through this, I just want to give you the rationale also as to why we chose to make a lot of changes, some of them drastic. For the season, there will be no postseason at all. There will be no TVL championships. It's gonna be basically a straight season. We're gonna make sure the kids get out, where they're able to play the games safely. And it's all about just the kids getting out there and having an experience and being able to play a sport for the last six months that they haven't been able to do. So the sports, when they're gonna start, the earliest they can start is September 18th. That is the MIAA recommendation. The TVL has voted to start a week after that, actually on September 26th. And that was kind of, we were getting some feedback from superintendents and principals that were just saying, having sports the week we start school, when we don't really know what that's gonna look like, seems like a daunting task and something that we should probably push off a week. Golf is going to start on the 18th, and that is really because they're borderline getting that season in anyway, starting on the 18th, because it's gonna run out of daylight. And it's hard to get golf courses on the weekend. You can't say, hey, we're gonna play on Saturday, too. That's when they're making money, so. When we, the sports that we're gonna run, so this is a little bit of a change. For the fall, we're only gonna have cross-country soccer and golf, so just those three sports. And football, volleyball, and cheerleading is gonna move to what they're calling the Fall Two Season, which starts on February 22nd and is gonna end on April 25th. So that changes, the winter schedule's the only one that kind of stays the same. But that also pushes our spring schedule into July 3rd, which a lot of school districts are just gonna say, no, we're not going until July 3rd. But thank you, MIAA, for adding four more weeks of work for everybody. So that, I don't anticipate that happening. I think there's gonna be a lot of pushback on that. So they might end up shortening that season and trying to squeeze the postseason in, so we don't know. And just to keep in mind, all of these changes, when I get into the meat of this, is just for the fall. So we will rehash all of this again in the winter. The risk levels, I'm sure you've all heard about the risk levels. So if you're a lower-risk sport, you can do things with limited modifications. If you're a moderate-risk sport, like soccer right now, and volleyball, which is, I'm gonna give you a little more information about volleyball in a second. But soccer's gonna have a lot of modifications. Some of them have been leaking out on Twitter today. I'm not gonna say what they are, because I don't know if they're accurate until I get the actual MIAA modifications, then we'll go from there. If they use the youth modifications, they're really out there. It's a different sport. It changes the way that sport's played completely. If they can back off of that a little bit. It's about the context is the issue. With soccer, there's more context than you think there is, so. And then the high-risk sports, cheer and football, I mean, again, they're going to that Fall Two season, but almost all of the winter sports are high-risk. You're, they're inside in their high-risk, so there's gonna be some, a lot of modifications for the winter as well. All right, here's the one tricky one. So as a group, we said, how do we do this the best way for all the schools? And the TVL covers a wide geographical area, so we wanted to make two pods, and it's all based on geography, not the size of your school. So Pod One is Ashland, Bellingham, Holliston, Hopkinton, Medway, and Norton. Pod Two is the, is Dedham, Dover, Medfield, Millis, Norwood, and Westwood. The rationale between Pod One is that it's all along the 495 Belt. So travel is fairly easy. Once you get off 495, you're out to school. In Pod Two, all those schools are really close to each other, with the exception of Dover. So Pod Two really makes geographic sense, as you have Norwood, Westwood, Dedham, and Medfield basically touching each other. This is not necessarily permanent for the whole year. I could see it staying for the whole year, but it's not necessarily permanent for the whole year. A couple of things to add there. No non-league games for the fall, no scrimmages for the fall. So, and once we get to the scheduling part of it, I'm gonna mention the scheduling now. So the scheduling, you're gonna play one town, one weekend. So boys' soccer's gonna go to Hopkinton, then Hopkinton's gonna come here. So that's how the schedule's gonna work. So once you play Hopkinton once, you're not gonna see Hopkinton again. For practices, the first two weeks of practice, you'll be just like regular, a regular season. You're gonna be able to practice every day. Once the season starts, we all agreed as a school, as the best thing for our schools would be to limit practice to three times a week. Some teams may even only do two times a week. I talked to a coach today that even mentioned, maybe I'll have practice with Cohort One one day, Cohort Two another day, and then on Friday, I'll have the whole team practice. It's kind of an interesting, I didn't even think of doing it that way, but if they wanted to, they could. All right, one big thing here is the state guidelines limiting people on a playing field for practice. So what's gonna happen is you can only have 25 people on a playing surface at the same time. But you can divide a field in half. So for girls' soccer team, they always practice on one field. So the JV team would be on the left side of the field. The varsity team would be on the right side of the field. They can't mingle at the end. They can't come together. And they really shouldn't be scrimmaging, well, they can't scrimmage each other, well, they're not supposed to. So they would have to scrimmage amongst the varsity and scrimmage amongst JV. Alright, for games, again, golf is going to be primarily during the week with the exception of some Sundays that they will play. A couple of courses have said they can accommodate Sunday matches after 2 o'clock. So that would be nice to do that, make it a little bit easier. Roster limits are going to be 20 per team, so that's, I know we're going to have some issues with. Something like cross-country. Right now we have 21 people registered for cross-country boys. So do I tell one person they can't go? So, but the thing is, if I bring 25, then we can't have the event because there's too many people there. If the other team is 25 and we have 25. So we've talked about the potential of, you know. I I don't know, really, depending on our numbers, I mean, if we had 50 too many kids, you might have to have a separate running club or something. That would be monitored by the coaches, but we're really going to have to look at that. The golf roster is eight per match, so you can still have 20 people on a golf team, but only eight can go to a match. So that's eight at a varsity match, eight at a JV match. The varsity side of it's the same as it's it's always been that way. So you might have 12 kids in varsity golf, but four of them don't go to the match. Again, schools are going to play on Saturday and Sunday, so all of our games are going to be on the weekend for cross-country, which will have five meets. Soccer will have 10 games. And they're all going to be on Saturday and Sunday. They also passed a rule to, if principals allowed, to let coaches. Coach out-of-season sports, meaning you could have football practice. While it's not football season, you can have basketball practice in September. The TVL principals and athletic directors recommended that. We just leave the rule the way it is, the way it's always been, so we're not going to adjust that. We can't have six teams practicing when we have limited fields. We're trying to social distance. We just thought it was a little too much. And some additional items, the sports modifications are going to be released. They're supposed to be released tomorrow, so they'll probably be released on Monday or Tuesday. I do think they're going to slowly leak out a little bit, though. Myself and Matt have talked about transportation. There's a lot of pros and cons to doing it and not doing it. And it's not, it's logistics, it's financial, there's a, there's a lot of things to go into thinking about that, so that's a, that's a large conversation. Locker rooms as of now are closed. So we're not allowing students to go in the locker rooms. We have to really look at bathroom facilities. You know, are we going to get porta-johns outside? Are we going to open off, open up the bathrooms in the building that you can lock off? But again, that's a, now you're needing custodians at every event, cleaning, you know, a lot of things go into that, so. We're looking at different things. We're pricing out what it would cost to get some porta-johns and then could they clean them every day? Like, could they come back and clean them? Typically, they only clean them once a week. I already mentioned the out-of-season coaching and then use fees, we're going to have to look at that too. I mean, it's going to be very hard to say we're going to have half a season. But then, say the use fee is still going to be 350. I mean, that's. I don't think that's acceptable personally, but I mean, that's something we'd have, we're definitely going to have to look at.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah, the 350 wasn't acceptable when we had a full season, so. Why would we be going to have a season?
Agreed.
Aaron, I had a question. Thank you. I know that this has been a lot of hard work. A lot of people really trying to figure out how we could get our students back playing sports. So we really appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. You had said something about sort of that, that switch for the, the couple of fall sports, football, volleyball, girls volleyball, and I think cheerleading. So what is the reason for that, Aaron? Is it because there wasn't enough space for? These students to practice along with sort of soccer and. Or like, what was the reason for changing those three teams specific, or those three sports specifically to more of like a, a spring kind of February into April?
Football and cheer was done by the MIAA. They moved the sport to that Fall Two. Volleyball was voted by the, the TVL 80s and principals. Essentially because I think three TVL schools. Two are remote, which are not allowing people in their buildings. Three of them are using their gym as a cafeteria. I believe Westwood is using their wellness center as a daycare. So having things inside. When we want to close a building at 3:00 and clean it. We, it's, it's hard to say then, especially, I mean, it wasn't just us, but if you look at our gym, it's in the middle of the building. It's not like we can have kids just go in the gym and leave. They're in the building if they're in the building. So that, but it wasn't, again, it wasn't. I was actually one of the few people saying, maybe we could pull it off and just use half the gym. But a lot of people, there was just absolutely no way they could have people in the building after school.
I think it makes a lot of sense. Like, I don't think that a lot of us would really think about all of the sort of. Behind-the-scenes things that other districts are thinking about, you know, in regards to their needs and in building space, so. And then, Aaron, in regards to spectators, it might be important to kind of talk about that. For, for sort of families for, for, because the one thing that we know is that's what builds community, right? We, we see a lot of our Norton students coming out to support their teams, so can you speak to that a little bit?
So as of this time, the TVL as a league has voted not to have spectators. And there's more that goes into having spectators. One, there's limitations on how many. So the, the state law right now, well, the guideline right now says one spectator per player. So I know some people that are going to lacrosse tournaments, you go in, your, your athlete gets a bracelet and that parent gets a bracelet and then they go in together. And you have to have a separate area for it. You have to obviously follow all the social distancing guidelines and they're making us do contact tracing, so that means we have to get. It's like when you go to the restaurant, you have to give your name, your phone number, cell phone number. So that's. That's a lot of work. Staffing, like you start looking at some others, I mean. For me, that means someone has to be at the cross-country meet, the JV field and the main field at all times, doing contact tracing. So that's definitely one thing.
Parents aren't going to be allowed? Parents are considered spectators and won't be allowed?
Parents are considered spectators.
We have, we are, we are moving to attempt to video games. So that's a, that's something that we started working on just in the last few days. The, the biggest issue here is, is a direct, so some people would say, well, sports have been going on for the last few weeks. That is correct. In terms of town leagues, so on and so forth. Those students are not walking back into a building afterwards. That day or the day after. So what they're trying to do here is allow for the students to have athletics, if you will, but at the same time, control. The ability for folks to actually be able to be there. It'll be interesting, Sherri, because I know you're a hockey parent. I know it's going to be really interesting when that comes to the fall because some of these other leagues have been playing and are playing right now and. There's going to be some real discussions around. How hockey will be done. I think wrestling is the other one that is going to cause some stress if these numbers are going up. Then the question would be that in any of these situations, for example, soccer, we have students who play club. Or play in other situations at the end of seasons or they're not supposed to during season, but we know that it happens. Contact tracing becomes the other issue and I, I'm not sure that I'm seeing a lot of contact tracing taking place with. Certain situations right now and we don't have a choice because students are potentially coming back into the building the next morning.
Yes, so. And above that is. If you think about it, how far away, I guess they said they're going to give us proximity guidelines. That's what I heard today, so. How far away do you have to be not to be considered a spectator? Like, if someone's standing in the baseball field while I'm playing soccer, I don't, I don't know. Like, if I'm chasing people around Norton to make sure they're not watching the game, I don't know how that's going to work.
We all know.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I saw something on the news and I wasn't sure if it was a, a state. Regulation or whatever, but there was something about if your child was over 18, that you weren't allowed to be a spectator.
They just recently changed it to over 21. Because if it was over 18, then they would have eliminated spectators at every high school sporting event.
Right, because, I mean, if you have a senior, chances are your kid is 18, so. I understand they were trying to do it to, to limit the college spectators, but I mean, 18 seems a weird cutoff.
So I, I did have a couple of questions too. When we look at, you know, this Fall Two Season. You know, how does that fit into the other sports? Like, are, are some students going to be forced to make a choice? Of what they're going to have to play? Like, if they're a football player, would they choose to then? You know, play basketball or, or is it going to be that much of an overlap?
Yeah, there's no overlap at all. So you can actually play four sports, potentially.
Okay, so my other question, I, I know when I was reading this, you know, being that some of these sports are on the weekends, I, I. Is there a way that, you know, because it's the weekends, parents could. Provide the transportation as opposed to a bus? Is that something we could look at or is that something MIAA always typically shuts down if I believe?
Yeah, so a lot of schools are doing only that, so that's what me and, we have to figure that out too. Like, do we want it to be self-transportation? Do we want it to be busing? Do we want it to be a mix of both? So, but if you think about it from a busing standpoint. So we used to send the girls soccer team, JV and varsity together on one bus. We can't do that. They both have to be on a separate bus. That's another reason for the roster limits. If you get on a bus. You can only have 20 players and two coaches on the bus. Correct, Matt? 22?
Our maximum on a bus will be 23, but we do want to leave a little bit of room on every bus in case. Something happens, like somebody actually does start to feel symptoms. While they're away, we have to actually be able to segregate them six feet away from everybody on the bus, so. You know, if they're off at a game and we're required to transport them back, we have to have the, the ability to safely transport those people back.
So Aaron, another question I have, so cheerleading and football have moved to Fall Two. What happens if we get through the fall and things are steady? We get to winter sports. What if they, you know, basketball, hockey, wrestling, they're all too, too much contact? Do they get the opportunity to play in Fall Two as well?
According to the MIAA, yes.
So Fall Two could be.
That season, you can push anything into that season.
Let's remember that fall, that this Fall Two idea. Let's just, let's just say that there aren't very happy superintendents about this idea. Or, and I appreciate our TVL. Superintendents and specifically principals and ADs getting together and really looking at this. Fall Two requires that everything goes into July. What do I do with students who have graduated and no longer are under my tenure? How long does that go? Usually it's a, a round in the tournament or something like that. What do we do with staffing? Coaches who maybe don't want to coach until that, that time of the year. Because maybe we got out June 4th. You know, look, if we, if we really look at it, we could get out as early as that. Depending on the, the schedule changes and how close we really are at some point this year, so this is, this is the. This is a good attempt. As many of you know, I am, I am, have a history with the MIAA of not necessarily being in their biggest supporter. I understand the intent here. I do, and kudos to them to try to make sure that kids get the benefit of athletics. But it is requiring some potential significant cost that nobody has. There's a potential impact bargaining discussion here that we need to have, based on the length of the season, how many games with coaches stipends. If I was increasing the season the other way, I'd be getting that request, so I think the school committee needs to have that discussion and. Executive session at some point and decide which way you want to go and then come out with a public statement. So there's a lot of impacts here. There's an impact on my athletic director. He's now working Sunday to Sunday. Got to figure out how to give him a break. It's impossible to try to do all of that. So, because we're only playing on those specific days, so we have to find a way to support. All of these things in order to support our student athletes, which we want to do and as you know. I'm a huge supporter of it, but there's a lot of minutia here. You know, students driving their own cars, not a big fan of that. Because we all know what happens at the end of a practice or a game and they pile into cars. Some, that's concerning. Finding the right, finding the transportation for a Saturday or a Sunday game and the increased costs that that has. That's another question. So this is all good stuff. I'm not trying to be negative, but at the same time, this has got some significant. Impacts across the board.
So Joe, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I think that a lot of it, you know, I didn't really think of. Mentioning that and Aaron and I, we, we talk pretty regularly, so I do have an idea of what's going on with athletics. But I think as far as, you know, extending a season or whatever, I think that. You know, and, and coaches may having to, to work longer or work more or staff, whatever. I, I think at this point I would go back to kind of your catchphrase for this year. And, you know, being kind, right? We, we've got, especially our seniors. Who, this could be a horrible year for them, could be. I'm hoping that it's not. But they concern me greatly and sports is a huge part of our kids' lives. We know that and I don't have a senior. So I'm just, you know, I'm not just speaking personally, but. I just, I worry about them and, and if they can't get a season and if they can't get something in, they, they have, you know. This whole year could be a complete disaster for them. So I just think that we have to really think long and hard about allowing kids to have. If, if we have a chance and, you know, it costs people working longer or, you know, I, I just. I think we need to really think about these kids and, and their emotional wellbeing of being able to do what they love the last time.
Right, and to add to that, the middle school sports group principals, which basically run that league because it's not connected to the MIAA, they're not playing any sports this fall. So all fall middle school sports are closed for this year. They will consider. That floating season at a later time and they haven't made a decision on the winter season. So there's a group of kids that we know are, I mean, we have one of the most active middle school athletic programs around. Added to that that we haven't discussed tonight is the next step on student activities, i.e. clubs and all of that. You'll be getting. Thoughts on that. We will probably be not having a lot of that, if any, of that happening during the first. Two to six weeks of school anyways, just simply because of everything to do with. When does it happen? How often does it happen? Does it happen remotely only? What does that look like? Which clubs will run and activities that can be done remotely? Versus which ones can't at all, so all of that needs to be worked through still.
Just to add one thing, during this season, as they, it keeps getting pushed back a week here, a week here, a week here, you run into daylight issues. And we're already starting to get triple E issues, so that really necessitated us playing on the weekend. I mean, I couldn't finish a JV soccer game in the pitfield that gets dark a half hour before the sun goes down because it's surrounded by trees.
I think we're probably all in agreement that we have to do what we can to get our students to play sports, so Aaron, thank you. I know this has been sort of a 24-hour-a-day job for you and we really appreciate your effort and really your advocacy for. The students of Norton, so it's been a lot of hard work. I just have one last question. What is sort of the rules about students wearing? Or, or athletes, excuse me, wearing masks or coaches? Is there a rule? In any of these sports that anybody has to do that?
So all of those rules are the ones that are coming out from the MIAA.
Those are the ones that will be coming, and I think it's September 1st, is that correct? Is that potentially the date?
Yeah, it was supposed to be tomorrow, but I think it's going to be the first. Yeah. It was supposed to be tomorrow, but I think it's gonna be the first.
Okay.
But I, I'm almost 100% positive, all the coaches are gonna have to wear masks.
Okay. So, is there any other questions or comments? Aaron, thanks for the update. Um, is there anybody attending the meeting that has any questions or comments? Seeing none, so thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Dr. Byetta, any additional items?
Oh, just your vote to go, to go into executive session and not returning to the open session.
Hi, Joe, if I could just give a quick update on the meals program?
Oh, yes, thanks.
So we got some, some good news, uh, this week. The, on Monday, we found out that the USDA is extending. The child feeding program through September 30th or the first day of school, whichever comes first. So that's great. We're gonna be able to feed kids. Right up until, uh, we start back into school and hit the, uh, the National School Lunch Program, which is our normal program we run during the school year. Additionally, we found out today, just, um, from FEMA, that they're extending the, uh, the adult feeding portion as well. Through September 24th. So we're also gonna be able to continue feeding adults that are struggling within our community, which that number has really not come down all that much. Over the past month. Uh, it's been pretty flat, right around, uh, actually, our average is slightly versus the previous month. So we're gonna continue with the program. Um, I'm gonna be on the site board meeting at some point here, uh, give them an update as well. Uh, we may, uh, need to have some discussions, cuz once we get back into school, we're gonna have to change the program. Timing of when we can have, uh, folks coming on site, the location of where we do it, and, uh, the cost structure will change slightly as well. So if we, uh, while FEMA is reimbursing, it, it will cost us a little more money. Um, if FEMA is not gonna reimburse, which I'm really not feeling strong that they're gonna give another month extension. Uh, we're gonna have to work with the, the town to figure out, um, if they wanna continue to do this, or if there's other options that we can bring into play.
Now, on the remote days, are we continuing to feed children as well?
Yes, so on the remote days, we are, um, since it's a day with no transportation of students, we're gonna utilize the school buses. And we will drive to fixed, uh, drop-off points. Basically, they'll be the closest bus stop to your house. Um, we're gonna, uh, work on having an ordering system. Um, I, I would like to see a, a weekly ordering system where families place their order on a Friday. And then we're able to deliver meals on that Monday, and then take care of meals also during the week. Um, and anyone who's on a remote plan, we could deliver all of their meals on that Monday as well, so they could pick up a box for. You know, a, a whole week's worth of food and be able to put that in their house and, and have it in their refrigerator. All developing, but we, we really are trying to make sure that we're getting food out to people.
Matt, thank you. It has been really, um. Just amazing watching you and Mike, um, really develop a food program in Norton. That, as, you know, I think Sherri says a lot, we've always tried to be a leader in Norton, and I think you have definitely done that with this program. So, on behalf of the school.
Thank you very much. Uh, really, all the, all the thanks goes to our, our, our food service team. They're doing an awesome job, and they're making it. A lot of fun for people. Um, they're really, uh, you know, you take something that's really kind of a, a struggling thing, it's an emergency situation, and, uh. To make it so light and enjoyable and have a theme every single day has just been fantastic.
I agree, so.
Always thank you, Madam Chair. If I was alright with you, would, I think it'd be a great opportunity for you to put some names with faces with the food services, with Charles and their folks, and maybe invite them to an upcoming meeting. Um, so you folks could, uh, just really get to see who the names with the faces, that the people that are doing, have been doing that since March 16th.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
I think actually we should try to plan something where we can actually, uh, provide them food.
I think that's a great idea.
At least an appreciation something.
Right, we wait on them socially distant out in the parking lot or something, and, and we bring them something to eat. I mean, it's the least we can do that they have fed this community for six months.
Dinesh is really good at that. Um, one, one only, the last thing, Madam Chair, through to the rest of the committee, uh, not something that I typically do, but just, uh. A shout-out to the Eunice family, who unfortunately, Mike lost his sister, um, abruptly in the last few days. And, uh, so, uh, my respects to the, to the Eunice family and their unfortunate loss of, um, of their sister.
Thank you for letting us know that as well, and we do send our very best wishes, so. Any further items, discussion? Seeing none, I would like a motion to end. The school committee meeting to go into executive session and not returning to our regular. School committee session.
For the purposes of preparation.
For the purposes of preparation. For, say that one more time.
For impact bargaining.
For impact bargaining, thank you.
So moved.
Thanks, Kathleen. Is there a second? Dan. All in favor? Sherri? Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And Carolyn, yes. Alright, see you guys in a few minutes. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.